Right there, because we lost two.
People like this?
No. Like so.
Those are flowers.
Flowering flowers.
Flowering flowers.
So there you have it.
Okay, where are you gonna stand?
Yeah, I was gonna say, notice that it's the women who have the shovel.
The women are going to do the work, it's okay with us.
Tree hugger.
Can't hurt me. Here we are. Don't look like we're really... There, there, we need to face the camera. Face the camera.
Oh, you want the village hall behind?
No, no, no.
The village hall.
Okay. Come on, come on, come on.
Want the village hall in the background? Yeah.
Uh, that's probably better.
Yeah.
Jerry's setting it up.
You don't want anybody to think it was the town that planted the tree.
That was my idea. Okay, how about that? Does that work?
There you go.
No, I had Michael make it clear, he got it back. It's nine to five, not a quiet day.
Well, it is a much nicer setting, huh?
Okay, we're ready.
How about the other two?
For some reason, they're being shy.
They don't wanna...
There are enough people in this room.
You don't wanna break my camera, huh?
Put it down there.
Or her camera.
They're not tree huggers.
Ah, so we are. But that's...
What happened?
Did you put it on?
I did. And when I tried to pull you in, it went off.
Oh.
It's going right off.
The battery's probably dead.
Probably the battery shot. Take good pictures. My's not working.
We're good?
Are we done? Okay, would you like to know what kind it is? Spring snow.
Crab.
Spring snow crab.
Spring snow crab.
Yeah, it does, the battery comes up with a line through it, so...
But we have other pictures of it.
Proclamation?
You're gonna read a proclamation?
Sure. Not here, we'll go inside, inside.
If you weren't on the video, you should feel good by the truth.
But it's inside. In 1862, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed for the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska, and whereas 2011 is the 139th anniversary of the holiday, an Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs particularly in village, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce light giving oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wicker our homes, fuel for our fires, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Be it therefore proclaimed that May the 2nd, 2011, be designated Arbor Day, a celebration of the Village of Goshen's Community Forestry Program. In witness thereof, Kyle Roddy, Kyle P. Roddy, excuse me, Mayor of the Village of Goshen, has here and to sign his name and cause the sale to be fixed the 2nd day of May, 2011. And may I say that this year, there was so much destruction of trees that it is particularly heartwarming for us to be planning our spring planting program, and that was the very first of about twenty more trees that were planted. Thank you very much, Matt.
Thank you.
And you guys?
Trusty Matthews, thank you for everything that you have done in the past to look at me to do for our community with the tree planting and everything. And thank you for the forestry council for everything that you do, and thank you for being with us tonight. At this point, I guess we're gonna start the regular agenda. Even though it's a work session, and we usually don't say pledge allegiance, I thought it might be appropriate to say it tonight, based on yesterday's events. So I'd ask everyone to rise for pledge allegiance.
We could share.
The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. And again, even though it's not Village of Goshen, Brett and I think it's important to recognize our armed forces and military for everything they've done. Yesterday was major, significant, but I'm sure something that we'll remember for the rest of our lives. It goes to the strength of our country and our country's military. Okay, so I'm gonna jump into the regular agenda now. Just a few brief items tonight. First thing I wanted to talk about, it's something that we've discussed in the past today, and we may have read about in the papers. There are, I believe, three homes on Police Drive in the Town of Goshen that have their wells that are contaminated with MTB and their wells they cannot use, and are using water that's prodded in. We have not gotten a formal communication from the town or the county regarding this issue, but I think it would behoove us to take the first step, and if the board is... Perfect. Is okay with it, I would like to send a letter to the town board just saying that the village would like to offer water service to those three homes that are living with contaminated water. So if this board gives me permission, then I'll send out, draft the letter and send it out tomorrow. But I just wanted to make sure that we were okay with that first.
I think it's a great idea. I think it's, you know, there are moments where we have an opportunity to do the right thing, and people are there in our village and town. We're all still Goshen, so, I mean, you know, Michael's supportive of it. You and I talked about it briefly last week, and I think it's a fabulous idea.
Yeah, I'm 100% sure. I think it's a wonderful idea.
We talked about it here.
I think it is a great idea, because the people are at risk, and we've already, several years ago, helped the county at their DVW garage for the same reasons. It seems that that would behoove us to be absolutely gracious by stepping forward even when it hasn't been requested. Beyond that, I would also think that it should be more formalized in how it be drawn up. It can be two sentences from Dave Duncan, so it doesn't commit us to anything more in the area other than helping people at risk, which is our goal.
Sure. Yeah, I'll make sure they involve with them before they draft it, during the drafting, and, you know, just be something very simple.
It's simple. I'm not looking to make it difficult.
Obviously, there'll be, you know, things we'll have to iron out if we move forward on it, you know, like with regard to their connection, and we need a municipal agreement, or just...
Or just an emergency situation.
Right, so we'll iron out, just to make sure our bases are covered deeply. But I don't see there being many hurdles to cover.
Neither do I.
So, okay, thank you. I think the board for your support on that. The next thing, we have a new treasurer in Sarah Goldberg. The deputy treasurer is gonna be filling Joan Prentz's role. We discussed that at our last work session. And obviously, we have a new mayor. And I think it's just a good practice to get into, is to, when there's a changeover, to have an outside group come in and all in our books, just to make sure our financials, everything is properly accounted for, and just to make sure we're using our best practices. So I would, if the comptroller's office can provide, set auditing free of charge to us, I think it would be something that we should look into. With the state government, which our residents pay a lot of tax dollars to the state, the state can provide us that auditing service free of charge. I would like to move forward with that, just to make sure that everything that we're doing is being done in the proper ways. And if it's not, we can adjust, and if it is, then we know what it is. Move forward. But just before I reach out to them, I wanted to make sure the board was in favor of that.
And I would comment that, that I think, even before we contact them, we should ask our accountant for some recommendations, because I know he's talked about some of that, and I think that would be a good point to start.
Yeah, I'll talk to him. I just, if it comes down to CPA that's in the field, we would have to pay, or the comptroller that we wouldn't prefer.
Sure.
Just 'cause, you know, our tough fiscal times already right now. But I'll absolutely talk to him for advice on this.
Okay, I'm in favor of that.
Okay.
I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, no, I think it's a very good idea, just to make sure everything's in order. And as you mentioned to me on the phone earlier today, that, you know, sometimes, and with no bad intent, people follow bad habits from way back in the day when they first learned, and make sure that if there are any bad habits that were being followed, that we can correct them.
But we hope not, since you're recently...
We hope not. But, no, when you have a change, and Joan was our treasurer for many, many years, and I'm not saying she did anything wrong, sometimes she may have learned something the wrong way, and then you just start carrying that forward.
I think that there's a lot of things that, it's not necessarily following a bad habit, it's just that you didn't know it yet.
Yeah.
Know that it was wrong.
Right, that's what I mean.
It's not, and you wanna, was making that play.
And that being said, there might be nothing wrong at all. We might get a glow review then from the comptroller's office, which I don't think happens all that often. But you never know. So if the board's okay with that, I'll find out if they do offer that service free of charge. Last, just an update. The town supervisor and the town's budget officer asked me for a projection of what we believe their upcoming bill would be for the next fiscal year. So what I did is, I took our total sewer budget, because my understanding of the formula is that they base, their bill was based on their percentage of the total flow multiplied by the total sewer budget. So I provided those numbers to the town last Wednesday. I got a letter back from Bill Standish, and I spoke to supervisor Bloomfield, and they felt that there were certain costs allocated in that number that should not be allocated to them. They specifically spoke about transmission lines and our infrastructure repairs, and they felt that the bills caused shouldn't be passed on to those residents. So I'm gonna be meeting with Mike Benary tomorrow, our accountant, because I told Mr. Standish and supervisor Bloomfield, our intent is never to pass on any cost that they should not be shouldering to those individuals in the town, and I wanna make sure that any bills that we are setting over are completely accurate. So I'm gonna look at the bill that I gave them, or, it's not a bill, it was just a projection, just basically words on a sheet of paper. But I'll look at that projection, what they gave back to us, and Mr. Benary and I will go line by line to make sure that all the costs that will be passed over to them are appropriate. Because we might say the infrastructure repairs in the village shouldn't be passed on then under the contract. You could argue that if their flow is coming through in certain parts of our infrastructure, maybe that is part of the cost, but we'll take a look at it, because in that cost is also gonna be the sort of the issue. So there is a substantial increase from their upcoming bill to their last bill, as our mill residents are gonna find. So we'll go through tomorrow, just to make sure that everything is appropriate as per the contract.
As per the existing contract.
Correct. As per the existing contract. So... Because right now, we only have one contract, and it is what it is.
And if they'd like to renegotiate?
Right.
They're open to conversation.
Right, and it brings me back to what I've been pushing for, and it hasn't been a board authorized concept, because we haven't authorized anything, but just my own concept is to, if the village were to take over the town's infrastructure, and we maintained it and operated it, then we could build them the same way we build village residents, based on water with the same or slightly increased rates with the same assessment. But that's not something that I've gotten a positive response from from the town at this point, but hopefully they'll continue to consider it. And also, this board itself, we haven't formally authorized that concept either. That's just one of my thoughts. So I'll send, after I talk with Mr. Benary tomorrow, when we decide what the contract, if anything, should be omitted to them, I'll send an email to the board, just to let everyone here know what changes, if any, are made, and then I'll get my response over to the supervisor, hopefully by tomorrow afternoon or Wednesday. Because I do wanna get the town the response, because it's important for them to have that information to their bookkeeping, because they have to set their rates for their fiscal year. Outside of that, you know...
Can I make a comment?
About my own needs?
I have a question, just for clarity. The analysis that you're doing will be no departure from the interpretation of the existing contract. You'll just be going through it to see where you can be the most fair you possibly can be.
Well, what's important is, Mr. Benary, there's not a... He's trying to find how it was calculated in the past, when Joan was doing that calculation.
Uh-huh.
Because we don't wanna deviate from past practices, whatever it was, it should continue to be.
Right.
So if there are items that are open for interpretation, then we'll have to discuss those with council.
Okay, and then before, you and I have spoken about this, and I appreciate your zeal and interest here. So in any projection that you have for altering a proposal for the town of the future, it will come back to us first?
Well, I'm talking about my idea. You know, the concept is out there. I've talked to the supervisor about it in passing, but in terms of a formalized proposal from the village board, that would need to be by resolution by us, I think, or at least by, you know, consensus in work session.
Okay, so then, all I say to you is exactly what I always said before. I would love if it were presented, I would love, we'd worry. I think it would be appropriate if you could, you, I know you were going to put this into writing, and that I would think it appropriate for us to see it.
Sure.
Before it is given to the town to accept or reject. I would like us to have the first opportunity to discuss it altogether.
Sure, well, I'll print it out. I have a computer right now, I can put it in your mailbox. But what I would say also is, it's my concept, it's not a board proposal. So it's not like they'd be accepting the village proposal or not accepting it, because that would need to come from the board, and then the official actually need to have a board consensus on it. This is Kyle Roddy's concept tonight, and it's what does everyone think about it? So, and they could sink or swim, or tread water for a while.
I appreciate that.
But I understand your question, I can, I'll print that out, and then we can hear what lots of folks want to hear.
Great, thank you.
Just to reiterate what I've said all along, I don't have a problem with you talking to them.
No, I don't either.
And I don't think that it makes sense to have it all put in writing. You've had conversations with them, they have fallen unreceptive ears, but it's fine with me if people talk to them. I think it's excellent if you don't talk to the supervisor. We should talk to the town supervisor. We find some common ground, then we can, you know, I don't think that we have to fix it in stone. You've discussed things with them, find out whether certain concepts are gonna, you know, have any traction or not, and then we can come back and we can discuss them again.
Well, I think I'm positive, you know, President, Mr. Mayor, might have the timing of things wrong, although they may have disagreed with the letter you sent them last week about what the new charge might be for the coming year. Unlike previous years, supervisor Bloomfield actually was able to pick up the phone, call you, you might have even came in so...
Actually, he came in person. Came in person, dropped off the letter.
Speaks volumes, that we're taking this stuff in the right direction.
Absolutely, and I have to publicly, again, just thank supervisor Bloomfield, because he has held out an open arm, and, you know, we have very positive dialogue right now. And it's clear that we're not always gonna agree 100% of the time, but right now, I can say that we have a very strong working relationship, and I believe that's gonna maintain it. And when I find out what our results are from our accountant based on the upcoming bill that they'll receive, or the projection of said bill, you know, that's when we'll communicate and talk, I'm sure, in great detail.
Just for clar, oh, I'm sorry, Dave.
Okay.
Just for clarity, I want to be clearly understood that in asking for a copy of what we've talked about in the past, I'm not being obstructive, I'm simply asking for a copy of what we've talked about in the past. I think positive conversation between two boards that have been spending a lot of time going head to head is an absolutely positive thing for everyone involved. I have full faith that whatever ultimately is determined will come from approval from this board, and then ultimately acceptance by the town board, and we will come to a meeting of the minds, and I have every expectation that that's going to occur. I simply, for form, was asking for a copy of what was being presented. You can move from there, you're the mayor. That's all.
Absolutely. Misses Smith?
Yeah, I was just, my, my, I'm gonna kinda get off the trail, but back onto it, and my question kinda goes to you, Marcia, is when we used to get water, didn't we at one time get water from Glanmere?
Oh, yeah, in emergency situations, yes.
Right, so what kind of money, did we pay the same as the Village of Florida residents paid for the water, or did we pay an assessed, a higher rate?
I think that you'd have to, I could not vote it to you. We paid an emergency amount, and they were very cooperative in many ways, but we hooked up, we were not charged for certain amounts because it was a dire emergency.
Right.
And beyond that, they, we, I think we paid at the same rate, and until, it depended on how long it went on, different years, it was different prices, so I could not give you a dollar amount. We'd have to look.
Well, that's something... I mean, it's something, I mean, obviously, water and sewer are two different identities.
Mm-hmm.
But my question is, is, I mean, or just my understanding, is, what other municipalities around here provide services to other municipalities forfeit?
I know that the city of Middletown does. There was an article today about it. I think they brought in like a million dollars selling water, so...
I mean, I just think that, you know, I mean, something's telling me in the back of my mind, and I mean, I certainly don't think, because, I mean, the Town of Goshen, the Village of Goshen, it's kind of a closer knit community, I mean, obviously, we live in the Town of Goshen, the village is in the Town of Goshen. So we vote in Town elections as well as Village elections, but, so I'm not, I don't think that our intent should be to try to make any kind of, you know, profit or anything from anything to do with business with the town. But I think these other municipalities, their charges for water and sewer that they charge to these outside, out of there, they're charging a lot more money, a lot more money. Like 70, 80% more money than what their residents pay. And I think we should check it out, and, I mean, I think that's just, it's not necessarily a standard that we should use to figuring out their bills, but it's something that we should use to say, I think that, you know, we're providing you an opportunity to get on the bandwagon, you know, and with reason, and might kinda diffuse some of the hostilities to it if they found out what, like, several of these other communities that are tied in and being provided with services, and what they're paying, et cetera.
Comparatively, as much as...
Comparatively. And I would say that if we go back and look, and I don't know for fact, but I'm just speculating, that we probably paid more than what the Village of Florida residents paid when we got water there, and granted, it was an emergency situation. But if we wanted to hook up to them on a permanent basis, had that been there, I think we would have paid a higher, you know, a little more fee.
Sure, no, sure.
Now, we're not even in that ballpark with them. But I mean, I'm just throwing that out there with the sewer business and everything else, because, you know, obviously, me, I wanna get this all put to rest, and get this behind us, and let's move forward, and, you know, get all of these issues ironed out with that. But I'm just saying, that, I'm just throwing that out there in my mind, that, you know, I think that there's, I'm not saying they're getting the, we're offering them a bargain, I don't know, but...
We are.
I think we are. I think we are.
I believe we are.
I believe we are.
And I think, I think we're, as my mother, you'd say, you know, you don't ever stare a gift horse in the mouth. So somebody's, we're giving them a horse, and they don't wanna ride. Now, it's not a bad thing, I just don't think they fully understand it. And maybe we need to kinda help, you know, do a little research so we can provide them with information that might help better negotiate the whole process without any, you know, and stave off a little of the sparks that might be in...
Sure.
You know, because, I mean, we all know, something's gonna happen as far as here shortly with our, you know, assessment for the sewer and everything else, but, and so, you know, it's not a good thing on anybody's side of the fence, but we just gotta, you know, get it done.
Sure. And that leads into the other thing I wanna talk about tonight. We had a public hearing last week on the sewer assessment increase. A lot of people came out, and a lot of the conversation that happened that night was about assessment based on usage. And I think that as a board, we feel that the assessment's the best way based on the information we've gotten, but I think that we need to get more concrete numbers to show to the public to at least be able to justify that.
That's our position.
Correct. Because I think that the information needs to be put out there in a more cohesive way for the public, and also for us. So I've talked to Mike Benary about doing a study to really look at and give us some hard, concrete numbers on what it would be to do the billing based on usage and based on the assessment. I think the general consensus and the feeling that we have is, doing it based on usage would result in the average homeowner paying a lot more. But I think that we need to have the hard numbers in front of us before we make our decision.
Make it clear to the public.
Right, and also for us. He could very well do his analysis, and we might find, you know what, this assumption isn't incorrect, and the average homeowner would pay less under usage. That might not be the case, but I think we owe it to the public to at least say, okay, this is your concern, let's do our research, and unless we have a shadow of doubt, we shouldn't vote on it yet. So I'm hoping that we'll have that in the next day or so. If we have it prior to Monday, then we might be able to take action Monday night. If the results find what we think they're gonna find, but if the results say otherwise, then we're gonna have to put the brakes on, and schedule another public hearing, and get back to work. So I think that, you know, we'll be waiting on the results of Mike Benary's information, and that'll determine when we vote on this.
I would suggest, if you don't mind, that Art Tully should have conversation with Mr. Benary, because he is adamant about it not being to our advantage, and I'd like him to be able to explain to Mr. Benary why, which will make it very clear.
Not to our advantage, to...
To change.
Okay.
The fashion we're doing. I think he is, has been clear and resolute about that that would be disadvantageous to alter the way that it's done. And if that is to be made more clear to us, it will certainly make it more clear to the public, and therefore should be made more clear to Mr. Benary.
Right. Absolutely, I'll make sure the two of them collaborate a little bit. So, but that's just, I think that we really need to make sure that we have the hard numbers, hard facts before us, before we take any official action.
And see, and my contention to the whole thing is, is, I just didn't hear anything other than more speculation versus fact. Here it is, here's, this would be the percentage difference here, this would be the percentage difference here, this is, dollar wise, with the homeowner would be paying more, or et cetera, and stuff like that. Nobody said, I mean, it was just, no, it didn't say it with any factual stuff backed up of what this is gonna do, and something tells me that it just, I think that, I just get this feeling that this might have just looked at as the easiest way about going and solving it versus maybe the least cost effective to the, to the residents. And I don't think it was thoroughly explored the other way. I don't know. But I didn't see anything, and I certainly didn't hear anything other than, oh, that's not true, it's gonna be that, but nobody said why. And I don't, and I was here, like you folks, I never heard anybody say why, or exactly how, or anything else like that. So I'd just like to know how.
We all should know how.
Yeah.
And though it's made clear in the past, it's obvious that it's been re-clarified.
Sure.
And if we have questions, certainly, in public...
And then, you know, you must have heard something different than what Art Tully said, because I heard him say, "It may not be cost effective." I didn't sound say, "It definitively isn't." There's a big difference in verbiage.
And it should be borne out, so we're all clear.
Okay, so once Mike Veneri puts that together, if it's prior to Monday, and I'm sure it will be, I will, we'll get that scanned and emailed out to everyone, there'll be hard copies on my boxes, so I will take a look. And the last thing that I have tonight, and it's really just to begin a longer conversation, we've just, we're spending a lot of money on sewer right now, based on the whole stop water remediation, we have spent a lot in the past on the sewer treatment. So I think that it would kind of move us to get a good handle on the direction that we think we're going with water as well, with regards to CRB, because, you know, from my understanding, at some point, we're either going to have to build a filtration plant for the CRB well, or run the infrastructure from the well up to our current place. So I think we need to determine if, A, if that's the action that we'll need to be taken, when that will be, and C, if there are any grants out there, and then how long we can wait. You know, I think we need to find out from regulatory agencies, because right now, at this juncture, we can't afford to do a project that large of a scale, but I think at least let's get the hard numbers in front of us, because I don't know what they are.
Well, I can give you an analysis of where we are so far. We have, we did secure a grant, and that has been funding us, and we borrowed money in order to fund the project as far as it was going now. The approved process for now is for the board to go under, under, but the county, which is what has, what held us up, the county redirected the construction of their bridge. We are working with the county in order to hook up next to it, or be able to draw a directional board right next to it, so we don't run into a problem. We're in communications with the DPC overseeing, and with the Department of Health. That being said, the approved processing for this stature, for, for us to get the final approval and be online, will be for treatment, the simple treatment to be done on site, where we have proposed it now. It would be for a nation, and it has settling out because it travels that much distance. There'll also be treatment in there for any of, we'll be running into difficulties with some of the heavier.
Hard water.
Hard water, and that will be treated in Eladav on the way in, I don't know the, I'm forgetting the true term. In the future, which means over the next 10 to 15 years, is when there has to be discussion, and we have had basic discussion, what is the most cost effective way to ultimately treat our water treatment plant within that timeframe? Would have to be updated and upgraded, and would it be more cost efficient to build a separate big plant out here, or to upgrade the system here? We've had conversations with the state, with the county, and with our engineers on that issue, and have come up with preliminary projections for 10 to 15 years from now, what the cost would be to upgrade the plant here and to lay the line. So what you've been asking for is totally astute, it's with the direction that the water will have to go in the future, over the next 10 to 20 years, and we have preliminary projections for those costs and approvals that are necessary.
Okay, great, I just, right now, with this upcoming increase, our residents are maxed out, I just want to make sure that we're not going to have to add an additional cost on top of that.
Not this week.
Right, so I want to make sure that we have a good handle on that, it sounds like you do, based on everything that you've said, but I want to make sure that our residents aren't going to get another cost anytime soon, because we know the times are challenging enough right now.
We have enough money at this point, as far as we know, barring any unknown, to cover the cost of establishing what we have. If we have to go beyond that, I would certainly adjourn.
Okay. That's all I believe I had tonight, because, oh, I'm sorry, I have one last. Taylor Recycling, Taylor Biomass, some of us may be familiar with it. Basically, the concept is, they want to take garbage and turn it into energy. We've been approached by them to set up a contract, they are not currently using the technology, it hasn't been fully created yet, but they are soliciting municipalities to be under contract to take waste once they do open. And I'm going to give everyone copies of this, and we're not going to be able to take any action tonight, but the numbers are appealing. Right now, I believe we pay $79 to $85 per ton, ballpark, this would be $66 per ton, so substantial cost savings on a annual basis, and over the years. They're asking for a 20-year agreement, which to me seems like a long period of time, because if new technologies emerge after that, or anything, so that, you know, is a long time, but there's definitely a larger cost savings anyway from this. So it's something that I just want people to start thinking about, this whole packet, I'll get everyone copies of this, but it's, looking for ways to save money, this might be a great way to save money. I just don't know how soon they're actually going to be taking garbage, because, I mean, it's revolutionary technology, and I hope it works, and I think it will, but until it actually begins, you know, we'll have to wait and see. But this is something I'm interested in, if we analyze this during the week as individuals, I'd like, if we're in favor, I'd like to be able to take action in the near future. If we're not in favor, or if we have questions, then Mayor Vice President James Rollins has offered to come in and speak to us during the work session.
That's a great idea, I think that's a good idea, because, you know, when we went through this with the county, there are, I love the concept of technology, it's terrific. You know, when they can get into play, it'll be terrific. One of the clear questions was the amount of trucking we have to do, and the, and whether we have to separate it all. I don't think we have to.
Middletown Road, and see how that factors in.
Yeah, that's probably not terrible, but it's a little bit further.
So we'll need to look into the numbers.
I'd love to see that go.
Right. And it just says, ensure proper source separation for all recyclables, but our recyclables would still be going to the county for the single stream, this would just be for municipal solid waste. So as long as we're, everyone's doing their part in recycling, putting the recyclables out on Wednesdays, and garbage out the other days, and that caution we relatively love. But it's all things that we'll have to discuss internally.
That will happen if they are.
I would, I would, I would, so as fees, and that's another question.
It's exciting.
Yes, no, I think it'd be a great project.
In that kind of same note, I mean, we kind of hit on it one time before, I mean, is there some kind of a village ordinance of mandating that people recycle, put out their recyclables, that you know?
No, maybe, there is.
I thought, I was under the impression that there was, and it's actually supposed to be a fineable offense if you don't recycle and you're, but I mean, I'm just saying, maybe it's not so much something, if there isn't something in play, then it should, but I mean, it would be to our residents' savings, obviously, the less garbage we're paying tip and fees to get rid of, the less expensive it is for us to do the garbage, therefore there's more money in the budget, and we don't have to, you know, et cetera, it's a no brainer. And I, because it's just something that I kind of ride around, and when I put out my recyclables, and there's some people in my street that don't put out recyclables, but there's some people, a lot of people that don't put out recyclables, and unless they get detergent poured in their hand or something, or they get, you know, milk in a, even if it's in a carton, you know, there's no recyclables I see going out. So I'm just saying, and if it was emphasized maybe, or kind of reemphasized, or kind of promoted a little harder, maybe we could, we could save a little money.
Absolutely, and I think.
The tip if you.
That was a point brought up last Monday, Mr. Novak was the last name, he mentioned that, and it was a good point that, and I think it's a good point now.
And one other thing, I mean, if we're done with that, I just had a thing, I saw something where the town had, was reported that they saved like $5,000 or something like that by switching with Time Warner Cable, or something like that. What does our stuff do, what do we?
We're in the process of identifying any cost savings like that. We had a outside company take a look at all our phone bills, currently we're using Frontier, so we talked to another company who thought they would be able to do it cheaper, they actually couldn't beat Frontier's prices, but they identified certain areas in the bill that we could look into at Frontier and potentially get a savings. So, I mean, yeah, something like Time Warner.
I was curious, I don't know how they did whatever they did, but I just saw it, it kind of caught my eye, like, save $5,000 or whatever with phone stuff, and if there was something that we could look into, or whatever, they could resource us the same way.
Yeah, and Doug mentioned also, I believe, something about light bulbs that they've been talking about, and he said he was going to pass along that information to us. And also, I forgot to mention earlier, this Wednesday night is that economic development seminar at the Goshen Town Hall at 7 o'clock, I believe, so if all board members are around, if you can make that, it should be a great event. The planning, zoning, and ERBs should have gotten to know about it, so if you guys are around, it should be a good event to be at.
The other thing is, is that recycling of the computer and stuff, that Chamber Com is sponsoring, it's this Friday at the DPW garage.
Yep, great.
So, because, I mean, I know at the senior center they have some stuff that has to be discarded, and, but, I mean, it's just, it's all for the public too.
Right.
And I did happen to see a few people putting out computers.
I know, I know.
And monitors and stuff out on the thing for the DPW pickup, I don't know if they picked them up or not, but, yeah, so.
Right, does anyone have something they wanted to talk about tonight?
I think I covered the trees, I covered the water, I think, I think that was it.
Okay, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is that the home favor?
Aye.
All right, can anyone?
Could I address you as a board now that you're officially done, just for a second? I wouldn't hold you off. I wanted to offer an idea that Pete brought up in a conversation yesterday that I was having with him about this usage idea, and he has, he put a question to me saying, basically prove it, you know, you have the information from Veneri, if you feel that usage is better, where's, where's some kind of documentation of it?
Well, that's where we're at now.
And I heard you, and by the way, by the, this meeting tonight, you get five stars. I want to get this idea out first, and then I'll come back and say why. Five gold stars for this meeting tonight. But Pete put this to me, how do you prove it? And I've been chewing on it, and I think I have a simple, easy way that's cheap. It's all computerized. Your regular water bill is run by computer, you put the numbers in, you get it out at the end. Do a dummy run. With, figure out how much money you need to generate for a bond payment, you've got your gallonage, do a dummy run, it's cheap. Even if you have to spend a couple of bucks to bring in an assistant to help out doing it, you're talking about $10 million over 20 years, it's worth a couple of bucks to do a dummy run. And then, either you'll come down on one side or the other, but you'll have something to offer people saying, you've got some evidence. Right now, people feel like you're being, they're being told, because I said so. So I just wanted to throw that out to you. As far as the thing with police drive, again, gold stars, but be aware that there's litigation going on out there.
That's right.
Every family is suing the county and the town, and they're, three of the, three or five of the houses are having water supplied by the state, but the state is going to be suing the county as part of their enforcement action against the county, and those costs of providing water will be passed on to the county.
Exactly.
So, so if you do provide water, the question of who's going to pay for it, at this point, may be picked up by the state.
Or it may be more prudent not to get involved at this juncture. That's why I wanted to make sure the attorney wasn't involved.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
To be a good neighbor, of course, but to wait until all of this is ended.
The other thing that I caught tonight that was said, comes to a conflict of interest issue, it, the idea of doing an audit is absolutely best practices, you get five gold stars, absolutely it should be done, every time there's a turnover, so you know you're starting with a clean slate, but.
That's fine.
Mike Veneri should not be recommending an independent auditor, because then it's not independent.
Stake is.
And the same thing came up.
Joel, I don't think she meant, he just sort of, I don't think she meant that he'd do an independent audit, I think she meant, there's some suggestions, he just has right off.
He's been working with his own suggestions that he might have.
But if, but if he suggests somebody, then it's not a.
That's not what I was going to say.
No, that's not what she was.
But, but Art Tully was referring to saying, Art Tully has to recuse himself from Maplewood, that consideration, and I wanted to point out to you, if Art is recommending a replacement, that is a conflict of interest, as much as if he is serving, and.
But that was not part of the question of the seat.
No, it was something that came up while you were away.
No, I understand.
And.
But I think with that, the pool of engineers is, in this county, they're nuts and valuable, they all know each other, too.
True, but, but you shouldn't have the guy who has the conflict of interest referring a replacement.
That's a good one.
And also on Maplewood, you've got Stu Turner, who works for the village, who's representing Maplewood.
I thought that was Ed Garland.
He's, he's representing Maplewood before the town, and Maplewood is going to be applying to the village for sewer and possibly water.
Right.
Or at least in a negotiation to perhaps provide water. So you've got a potential conflict with Stu Turner, you know, working for one, representing the other, he's on both sides of the fence, and it's not clean. I like Stu, and he's a consummate professional, but I think you have a conflict of interest issue there.
It is.
Yeah, no, I hear you saying, so, all right, the stuff, bye.
Really, you get, you get five gold ones tonight. This is, tonight was the meeting we've all been looking for.
Okay, thank you.